The Oregon City Commission to order for Monday, where did my thing go, September 28th is 6:10 PM. We're running a little late because of an earlier meeting. So we'll just go. We're going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. First thing we have on our agenda is public hearing 15-520, ordinance number 15-1015, adopting the second six-month extension of the existing moratorium on land development, building, and sewer permit approvals in certain areas within Oregon City due to a lack of sanitary sewer system capacity and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lewis?
So, thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners, and apologize for having you here on a special meeting, but we want to make sure we hit the deadline for this extension. We're required to do that by law every six months, and the law is designed such so that we can also give you a bit of an update as to how we're progressing towards improving the moratorium. So, you know, with that, in your packet, there's a map that's called the City of Oregon City Flow Constrained Areas Sanitary Sewer Collection Systems. And I just kind of wanted, it shows up better graphically. So, the work that's been accomplished to date has been really, one project has been completed. It's at the intersection of 12th and Main. It basically is the pipeline that's in 12th Street. And it's highlighted in pink on that map as an area that's been, as tonight's action will also lift that particular area. So we've completed that project. Project that starts, that's already been designed and is out to bid, or has bid and been awarded. You've already awarded this project and is scheduled to start on October 1st is what we're calling the 12th Street and 12th and 13th Street and Division projects. So, on your map, there's three areas that are connected to the pink area, and those three areas will be resolved as soon as we complete the construction of the next project. So, that'll be, you know, as far as area goes, strong, two-thirds, almost 50% of the moratorium areas.
And we anticipate that to be done when?
Will be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
And so, from my perspective, it feels like we're doing everything that we have committed to you so far and then some. We've also talked to another consultant on our shortlist about doing the project that's really along Lynn Avenue. And that'll affect both the Lynn Avenue North and Lynn Avenue South areas. We're talking to them about not only the sewer project, but also what we can fit into there that would work or fit well with the corridor project. And we see what we can do. We mainly want to, our biggest concern is that we don't want to do a pipeline project that would interfere with, you know, say, a future wall for the widening of Lynn Avenue or something like that. So, anyway, it feels like we're making great progress there. The last project is Hazelwood. We haven't done anything there, but we committed to doing that kind of last, but not least.
So, timeline for Lynn Avenue North and Lynn Avenue South?
I would say we'll have a consultant contract within the next 60 days, but we don't have a timeline yet for completion. But, you know, that's what we said we would do as, within a year of award of the contract to a consultant.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll hopefully hit that one in the summer of next year.
Okay. So, at this point, I will open the public hearing. Is anybody here scheduled to testify? And there's nobody in the audience, so I will close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
I move the adopting the sixth, second six-month extension to the existing moratorium.
Second?
Do we need to do a reading on this?
Yes.
Ms. Richter?
Ordinance number 15-1015, an ordinance extending an existing moratorium on land development, building, and sewer permit approvals in certain areas within the City of Oregon City due to a lack of sanitary sewer system capacity for a second time, for an additional six months, lifting the moratorium for 12th Street Northwest and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Ricks?
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Thank you.
And we need to do a second reading.
Oh, so that was first reading. All right. So, we'll go to second reading. Let's have a motion in a second, just to be clear.
Remove for approval of...
Second reading.
Okay.
Second. Okay. Second reading, Ms. Richter?
Ordinance number 15-1015, an ordinance extending an existing moratorium on land development, building, and sewer permit approvals in certain areas within the City of Oregon City due to a lack of sanitary sewer system capacity for a second time, for an additional six months, lifting the moratorium for 12th Street Northwest and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Ricks?
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, next, under General Business, we have 15-535, Oregon City Support for C-800 Public Safety Community Bond. Chief Band?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is pretty short and sweet. If you remember, there was a presentation that John Hartschek came in and gave you. He is somebody who works for our group, the C-800 Group, which is basically the radio infrastructure that we communicate on. There is a process that we're going through of a bond that would be countywide to pay for replacement of that. Our intent, which has been agreed upon unanimously by the Board, is that they're to move forward with a bond, they're shooting for 10 cents a thousand. And the only thing that really changed is we were originally going for replacement of the radio infrastructure, but we've also, they've talked to their bond council and think they're able to replace half of the radios that need to get replaced for everybody who's a member of the C-800 Board. This, all you are approving tonight is a, that this letter would be signed by the city manager going forward in support of that effort, and that would be going to the county commissioners. And that is my recommendation that you vote to approve that so he can sign that. That's all I've got.
Well, I think they are, I remember the presentation, and it's well-needed, so. Have a nice universal system finally.
I move to approve 15-535, Oregon City Support for the C-800 Public Safety Community Bond.
And who's going to sign this? You, chief, or me?
I will sign it on behalf of the city.
Okay.
Second?
So, it's moving to second minute. Ms. Ricks?
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, then we have PC 15-211, Draft Intergovernmental Agreement Term Sheet for Leuma Falls Legacy Project Riverwalk Schematic Design Process. And Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. So, you may recall that we signed a memorandum of understanding quite a while back that really was kind of the guidance and the ability for staff to make decisions, expend funds when we're working on the Leuma Falls Legacy Project, negotiating easements and whatnot. As we've moved into the next phase of the Leuma Falls Legacy Project, which includes the design and engineering for the Riverwalk, as well as, as you're aware, we were successful on the Community Planning and Development Grant. They'll be running concurrently with that project. We've identified the need for additional agreements between the public agencies for how we would utilize the resources, the monetary resources that have been available to us, the staffing, the decision-making that has to occur between multiple agencies. When we had our last partners' meeting, we bought, we brought them the draft IGA framework term sheet essentially that you have in front of you tonight. And so, this is a term sheet, these are the concepts. And what we've asked each of the partners during that partners' group meeting was to take it back to each of their representative bodies and have a discussion, answer any questions that they may have, concerns that they may have. Because what will happen is we'll take those comments back, we'll negotiate those again into the final IGA, and then those would go back to each of those elected bodies for approval at a later date. So, we just wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to see them, since everyone on the commissions aren't part of the partners' group meetings. So, tonight, we have Catherine Krieger from Metro, who is the Leuma Falls Legacy Project Project Manager, and Christina Robertson Gardner, who's our staff, who's going to be leading up the Community Planning and Development Grant and has obviously been involved with this process since the beginning. So, with that, this is really informational for you. It's a chance to ask us questions and just to have an understanding of what we're trying to do in the IGA that's before you tonight. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Catherine.
I'm going to put up your favorite bubble diagram. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Holliday and Commissioners. Thanks for having me here tonight. Catherine Krieger, as Tony mentioned, I am the project manager on behalf of the Leuma Falls Legacy Project. So, I'm not just the project manager for Metro, I am the project manager for the whole project, which I'll get to in a minute. So, as Tony mentioned, I'll just go through some of the highlights of the IGA, if that's okay, and then make sure you have a lot of time for questions.
So, can I ask you, is this the same thing that we went over at the last partners' meeting?
At the partners' meeting, correct.
Okay. I'm going to step out for about two minutes, and I'll be back.
Is that exciting?
But you can carry on. It don't mean anything.
We have it on video.
Yeah, move it around.
Yeah, go ahead. So, as Tony mentioned, we're in a new phase of the project. The MOU that you signed was signed almost a year ago today, and a lot has changed since then. And so, we're thinking of the project now, looking at two years from when this IGA is signed. And because there are certain things that we know in that timeframe, and then there are things that, of course, will happen that we didn't expect to happen, but beyond that, there are many unknowns. So, we're just trying to frame a period of time that we understand. And we have said that we want to move forward with the Riverwalk to catalyze development, and then we've got the CPDG grant that Oregon City was granted last Thursday, and that's really exciting, and that really changed, brings a whole new body of work to the project. And what we need to do now is to make sure that we're integrating the Riverwalk, infrastructure, and economic development, which you see on our organizational chart, which we try to live by. So, at the partners' meeting, they charged us to come back with a governance and decision-making structure, scopes of work for all of this work that we now know we have, especially with the CPDG grant, a budget to complete the work, and to create an IGA to capture the scope schedule and governance, budget and governance. And then, so this is what's outlined in your term sheet. So, on the governance piece, we talked, we actually hired some consultants who are involved in a lot of public-private partnerships. And they outlined three different scenarios for us for governance. One is, as they thought we were primarily operating as a partnership of equals. All of, you know, between the state, Oregon City, Clackamas County, and Metro, we were all in it together and operating by consensus. The other model they suggested was a partnership with a lead agency. That's probably one of the most popular models, and that it's very clear to know who's in the lead, who's making decision, who's holding the contracts and that sort of thing. Then another model is a special purpose entity. It's a legal entity for a specific project. And they thought, you know, you're sort of, because Metro had quite a few of the contracts, especially for the Riverwalk at that time, said you're sort of between, right now, you're sort of between the lead agency and the partnership of equals. So, that's when the partners suggested taking a look at an IGA. So, the IGA has become our structure for that. We think a special purpose entity might be the way to go down the road. It takes a fair amount of time to put it together, a lot of legal work. And we just didn't feel like we were certain enough in the whole body of work to do that yet. And then, the other thing that they asked us to come back was the scope of the three bodies of work for the Riverwalk Infrastructure and Economic Development. And our goal is to integrate these so that we can be efficient and not spend, and spend our money and funds wisely. And then, the third thing is the budget, which is basically now a budget which is being developed for the entire project, not just the contracts that Oregon City has, or the contracts that Metro have, or the contracts that Clackamas County has. It's for the whole project, so that we're working together in an integrated fashion. So, on our famous diagram, there's the governance, which I'll go through first. So, the way it works is the working groups, sort of starting at the bottom, is the working groups will create scopes of work, they will create budgets for their work, and then they will propose those budgets with recommendations to the TAC, which is the bubble above those. And the TAC will then communicate to the representatives their, any thoughts that they may have, and they will also approve those scopes of work and budgets. The TAC will also basically be responsible for the project in general and be responsible to report up to the public partners. I am the project manager, so that I will operate the TAC, I'll organize the TAC, and also be responsible for reporting up to the, to the public partners. And what's really important about my role is that I am responsible to four different agencies, not just a single agency. And I'm really happy to be here. The decisions will be primarily consensus-driven. We felt like that's what, that's what's built, our success is built upon, and we're going to continue that success. A person can dissent from a particular issue and can either decide to dissent and not bring that issue up, you know, just to get along with that issue, or they can take it to a specific meeting of the public partners. The public partners can discuss it and send it back to the TAC for review. And so, the bottom line is, what we're trying to do is keep the decision-making within this structure, even though there may be dissent, and we may not always agree, but we want to be prepared for the times that we don't agree, because we know that this is a really hard project and where those times are likely to happen. Then we've, the IGA outlines a, the ability for emergency meetings, so the TAC can call an emergency meeting and the public partners can call an emergency meeting. And once again, the goal there is to keep the communications within this structure so that we're solving the problems together. So, I don't know if you have in your packets the backside of the, of the org chart, or the various scopes of work that we're going to be working on. And they're organized, a lot of the administrative work and communications with tribal relationships, strategic communications will happen up at the, at the TAC level, and then the various scopes of work around market studies, economic impact, development feasibility with the CPDG grant, and schematic design, and it will be, happen at the working group level. So, there's a lot of different contracts here and a lot of work going on. And then, and then, well, just not to, I didn't really highlight the public partners.
We have it.
But you guys know of the public partners, right?
Yeah.
So, what else? So, that, so we're developing a budget for the whole project. I'll be doing that, and it'll be flushed out in the final IGA. And, and also, I want to note that the local jurist, I mean, nothing we will ever do will ever override local jurisdiction, obviously, but we'll be working within, it'll be up to the, to the TAC members to basically take those decisions that are made up to the partners and back to their local jurisdictions. We, one of my jobs also is to highlight risks. One of the risks that we have identified so far is currently, we don't have an owner for the project. So, we're moving on Riverwalk, so we're moving ahead with a project without an owner. You can imagine what it's like building a house without an owner, and having a pretty healthy budget to do that might not be the best thing. So, in the IGA, we have given ourselves a deadline to, to identify an owner by spring. And I think what we haven't organized is, you know, how we're going to go about that. We're going to build it from the bottom up to see who would be the likely best owner, which could be a public body such as yourselves or Metro, we're both highlighted in the MOU, but also a potential nonprofit or something, something like that. So, we'll be obviously coming back to you to talk to you about that, as will Tony and Christina. So, those are the highlights. Happy to answer any questions.
I was looking at the budget, the temporary budget proposed, and it looked like the infrastructure costs were really underestimated. We were at a meeting recently that was talking about the $65 million...
Oh, great.
...level, and this doesn't even come close. So, I'm assuming that this is reflecting the monies we've identified or received so far, and how we would spend those limited resources across the different categories.
Right. So, the infrastructure funds that are identified are the funds that Oregon City received, primarily the funds that Oregon City received from the CPDG grant. And the money will be used, as the grant identified, to help better understand the infrastructure costs and how that work might be phased. So, in that two-year window, again, it's, the money is to understand the infrastructure better, not to actually build anything, unfortunately.
It seems like it'd be in our best interest that the City of Oregon City's owner.
Let's, let's back that truck up just a hair and say that we might want to consider some kind of a, maybe a tri-jurisdictional ownership, the state, Metro, and Oregon City. Ownership comes with a lot of things, including maintenance and repair and other kinds of things, that Oregon City might not have the total resources to accomplish in the future. So, the more people we keep involved in that, the better off we are if we have a good, solid IGA to deal with that.
The only reason I was going there was, Mayor Holliday, is because of our existing situation we have going on with one of our other facilities here.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. But the city manager and I have had some discussions about this, along with some other folks that are involved in the project. And, you know, going forward, that place isn't really, I mean, unlike Tri-Cities, it's not a utility. We're not providing any services there. I don't think any loss of control is a real issue, and Oregon City would be one of the partners, as right now, Tri-Cities, we technically really aren't one of the partners, so there's a major disconnect there. I get what you're saying.
That's fine. I thought I'd just throw it out there for a little discussion.
The state actually, or certain elements in the state actually don't want to have an ownership interest either, but I think from a political standpoint, I can probably get the right person involved in that discussion, so.
In the IGA, what we proposed is really trying to get to a decision on that ownership by March of 2016. I think we may have had this discussion before, it's just it's hard to know, it's hard to know, it's hard to build a house if you don't know who you're building it for. You know, there are certain liabilities, or maintenance issues, or operation issues, that one jurisdiction may be able to take on better than others, or whatnot. So, you know, this is going to be a conversation, I think, that, you know, we need to have as a commission, and then we can represent that with the partners when we have those discussions at the partners' meetings on, on who should be the owner, what entity, or do we create a separate entity? You know, I think there are, there are multiple options here, and part of the work we've been tasked with is the operation and maintenance plan, but then, you know, furthering this discussion to get to a decision on, on potential ownership of the eventual Riverwalk.
And I think you guys as staff need to get together and kind of give us the information we need so that we can have that discussion. And I don't think we're there yet, as far as the information.
Another thing, too, was there, are we looking at other examples of this kind of a project, how other people did this, or maybe it's a Riverwalk project someplace else, and how this all went? Have we got examples of that, that we've been kind of following a little bit?
Yes, we're working on it. Actually, Oregon City has a contract with a firm that is working on case studies to understand just that.
Okay.
A question on how the public relations works. I definitely agree that, you know, there should be one voice and consensus around what the messaging is, but as an ordinary citizen, how would I be able to find out all the details? Would I call you, or is there going to be a website? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we have a great website. And Christina's been managing the website. And we have a phone, actually, we call it the Bat Phone, where you can call, and there is somebody at Metro who answers all the questions there. You can submit questions online. We're pretty prevalent in the community, so people most know us and know they can call us. And our website is rediscoverthefalls.com.
And that's different than the Friends of Leuma, that's a different website?
Yeah, so the Friends are now a legal 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and so they're an entity, and they will likely, they do have a presence on the website, and how that develops over time, I'm not sure, but, but Christina, can they get to the nonprofit via the website?
They can.
Yeah, okay.
So, and to kind of add on that, rediscoverthefalls.com, that started out of the master planning process, and it's just been ongoing. So, every additional thing is added to that website, and that's how the community has kept up to speed.
Are there any other questions or concerns? You know, essentially, what this does is it does give the staff a framework to work within for making decision funding, making budgetary commitments, expenditures, as long as they're within the budget and, and the contingencies. We are empowering the staff at the appropriate levels to make those decisions, as well as providing a method to bring, you know, the unforeseen, which I'm sure we'll run into over the next two years, back through a decision-making body, rather than having Oregon City run off by itself and decide that we're not happy with something. So, really, this is the goal for, it really is operating somewhat like a separate entity, but we're going to do it through this proposed IGA to accomplish that. So, yeah, if there's no other questions, we'd be bringing this back in a later, in probably late November, early December.
It looks like the details around economic development haven't been fleshed out, at least in this document. Is there any more certainty about who would be taking the lead and how that would work?
Yes.
So, Clackamas County has hired John Southgate as a contract, on contract, to lead that effort for them. And I think, I don't know how much, if you specifically know him, but he has worked on the Oregon City Main Street, and he's worked on the projects in Oregon City.
The interim Main Street Director for, in between Lloyd Purdy and Jonathan Stone, so he's, and he's had so he's, and he's had some involvement with the project when he was here for that short period of time. So, we think it'd be a great resource for us to utilize, and you could really see the situation where the infrastructure and the economic development under the CPDG grant, it's hard to break those apart in some instances, because they're so intertwined. So, Ms. Robertson Gardner and Mr. Southgate will be working closely on that through the CPDG grant with the property owner. And, you know, I think the other, the other part of this is why it's so important to have Catherine as the overall project manager. It's not only to make sure that there's, we're avoiding redundancies, we're spending our money, you know, we, somebody has a global view of the work product, the expenditures, the directions, the decisions that are being made. But then, when you also start to think about, you know, you know, our next big goal is going to be the federal funding aspect of this, and if we can go to one place and be able to track hours, status of the project, expenditures, investment to date, you know, it just makes for that much better of a package, speaking with one voice, rather than, oh, the county spent this, Oregon City spent that, maybe we collected it all, maybe we didn't get it all, having one spot where that's all accessible, and we can use that as a benefit moving forward when we look at additional funding sources. And, you know, I think the other important thing here is that nothing in this agreement gives up, gives up the ability, the responsibility, or the powers of Oregon City to make decisions when it comes to land use. We are still the governing body for land use decisions. There will be a subcommittee in here that's proposed to look at the finances, so essentially, if we were to get audited, just because of the amount of funds that we have and from the different pots that it's coming through in different jurisdictions, those auditors, most likely in our state, in our case, it'd be Wyatt Parnell, will be representing the city and our interests, and, you know, meeting his fiduciary responsibilities, representative of the city, to make sure that the expenditures of funds within this project are done correctly and accounted for.
So, do you need the action on this item, or?
Just, this was just a debrief for the commission to ask any questions they may have, and just so that when we did bring it back in November, early December, it wasn't a surprise.
Okay.
All right.
Great. So, city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor.
So, middle of last week, we had what we thought was an algae bloom out at the Cove. We took samples, sent those up. The state did a test on those this morning. It did come back as positive for an algae bloom. The state health department has released a press release this afternoon. We'll have that posted on our website. We also reposted the Cove with the warnings as directed by DEQ and the health department.
And it's already on Oregon Live, so.
Okay. And, yeah, so the state was responsible for, they take that lead in the press release that would go out. The second is that I will be out of the office October 6th through the 11th, so I'll miss the October 7th city commission meeting, and I'll let you know who the interim will be while I'm gone.
I thought we had the wastewater meeting on the 8th.
We do. So, it'd be...
You little weasel.
Interesting timing on that.
It's amazing how, you know, I could foresee this 10 months ago.
Yes. Okay, that's it for you?
That's it for me.
So, anybody else have anything? I would report that Commissioners Mengeleberg and Polly, along with myself, attended the Legal Oregon Cities Conference this last weekend. I think we all learned a bunch of stuff and had a good time, and got a chance to network with, with folks from around the area, and, you know, developing the kinds of relationships that we'll need to help us with things like the Tri-City issue. So, moving forward, you know, I think it was a good time and got to learn some things. Other than that...